Tuesday, June the second, city council agenda. Now call this meeting to order. We will have the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we get the flag on screen?
Sorry, I was a little behind there, sir. One second. So you.
Very good. If you would, please render the proper salute and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America.
For which is hands. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, Vice Chairman Smith. Ms. Lit, the up the Dr. David Banks is on with us. Before Dr. Banks gives our invocation, if you would permit me to say something. I think I can safely say this for every member of this body that our hearts and our prayers, and I don't see Councilwoman Coonrod on here right now. Go out to Councilwoman Coonrod and her entire family. In the uncertain times that we live in. I want her to know in with this utmost certainty that we love her and that we're here for her. And may God watch over her and her beautiful family. Dr. Banks, would you please lead us in our invocation this evening? And thank you for being here, sir.
Excellent. My pleasure. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We humble ourselves as we come together before your throne. Father, our city and country are experiencing unrest, division, fear, and uncertainties. We lift up all of our leaders. We pray for our mayor, members of city council, and our national leader. Please grant them wisdom to know how to restore peace, wholeness, unity, and direction to move us forward. Help our leaders to stand for righteousness and justice. Guide the members of city council this evening as they conduct the affairs of this great city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Banks. You're a great friend, a great constituent, and a great Chattanooga and a great American, sir.
Excellent. It's a pleasure. Blessings to all of you.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, I reel back to you.
Thank you. We have no special presentations for tonight, and I will. What's the pleasure of the council on the minutes?
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion, minutes approved. Madam Clerk, under ordinance's final reading, five A, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number one three four seven three known as the fiscal year 2019 through 2020 operations budget ordinance. So as to appropriate seventy thousand dollars to the Chattanooga Zoo for operating expenses due to the closure as a result of executive order. Number twenty twenty zero six to close as precaution due to the COVID-19 virus pandemic wherein funds are reallocated from the Department of Public Works.
Councilwoman Burris followed by Vice Chair Smith.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilman, okay, you take your hand down. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert. Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion carries. Okay, now, under resolutions, economic and community development, if there are no objections from the council, let's take A and B together. If you would, Madam Clerk, read both of those, and we'll vote on those as a package if there's no objections. I say none. Thank you.
Item A, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to enter into an artwork creation agreement with Eric Finley. For Avondale YFD Center murals for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. B, a resolution authorizing waiver of park rental fees for Friends of the Festival and Supporter Riverfront Nights for the days July eleventh, July eighteen, July twenty-five, August one, August eight, and August fifteenth, in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions, comments? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
So moved. Now we move on to finance, seven C, please.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of federal emergency management agency FEMA and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency team of funds administered by the United States Department of Homeland Security. Major disaster declaration, Tennessee severe storms, tornadoes, straight line winds, and flooding. DR four five four one incident period April twelve, twenty twenty to April thirteen, twenty twenty declared on April twenty-four, twenty twenty to repair damage from recent tornado.
I have Councilwoman Burris followed by Councilman Ledford.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion's approved, nine zero. Seven D, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief of the Chattanooga Police Department to renew a one-year blanket agreement with Lico Geo Systems, Inc. To provide service repairs, updates, and warranty service for police scan station equipment beginning May twenty-five, twenty twenty through May twenty-four, twenty twenty-one. With one optional annual renewal and an annual spin limit not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Now we move to public works and transportation. Under public works, Madam Clerk, let's take with no objections from the council E and F together. They both have to do with water. See no objections.
Item E, a resolution authorizing approval or change order number one for CTE Engineers, Inc. relative to contract number W one six zero two one one zero one. MBW WTP recycle pump stations and drain system upgrade and non-consent decree project for an increased amount of sixty-five thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Or advised contract amount of five hundred forty-three thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Item F, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to apply for and if awarded, accept the Tennessee Agriculture Enhancement Program. TAEP grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for a with a fifty-fifty match sponsored by the Water Quality Program. Up to the grant amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for a total amount of forty thousand dollars.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions regarding these two items? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod. I didn't hear your vote.
She's muted.
Your mic is muted, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to approve carries, nine zero. Now, Madam Clerk, G, H, and I are all roofing items. Let's take those as a package if there's no objections. Go ahead, ma'am.
Item G, a resolution authorizing approval or change order number two final for tri-state roofing contractor LLC of Chattanooga, Tennessee. Relative to contract number Y one eight zero zero four two zero one replacement roofing system for Bryon YFD Center building for an increased amount of five thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars. To release the remaining contingency of one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars or advised contract amount of ninety-two thousand sixty dollars. Item eight, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number Y. Two zero 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 nine two zero one to Porter Roofing Contractors, Inc. of Morrison, Tennessee. Replacement roofing system for Cedar Hill Head Start in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars plus a contingency amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. For an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. Item I, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number Y. Two zero zero one zero two zero one to Willoughby Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc. of Coleman, Alabama. Replacement roofing system for Avondale Head Start in the amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars plus a contingency amount of six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Councilman Gilbert, followed by Councilwoman Burris.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion carries, nine zero. Item J, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to renew contract number W one nine zero zero two two zero one with Talley Construction Company, Inc. For twelve months with one renewal remaining for the purposes of sanitary sewer installation and repair at ISS and related facilities blanket contract. In the amount of one million six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a second. Any questions, comments regarding this item? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Madam Clerk, let's take K and L together. They both have to do with the resilience plan.
Item K, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute a professional services contract with Stan-Tech, Inc. For consulting services related to the regional resilience planning project for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Item L, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant to support the regional resilience planning project from EPB. For a total amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Councilman Ledford, followed by Councilwoman Burris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a lot of questions about this particular item on our agenda, and I was able to speak with Mr. Wade of EPB this week. And also several conversations with our chief of staff, and I believe that this will help. Will help unmask a myriad of identifiers that probably will increase efficiency in delivering products and services. Back into the community after a disaster of any kind of magnitude. And with that information, I think that this will actually be very beneficial, the information that will come out of this, this study. So I would like to move to approve.
Councilwoman Burris.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments regarding these two items? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
It's nine yeses.
Motion carries, nine oh. Now we move to purchases. If you would pull up your purchases and Ms. Lydia, bring in Mr. Salmons, please. Mr. Salmons, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
Good. Go ahead, sir.
We have a few new purchases for your approval. We also have one regular emergency purchase for your approval. And there are a few renewals and emergency purchases under the mayor's emergency declaration for your information. Starting with tonight's new purchases. From the Citywide Service Division of Public Works, we have outdoor power equipment. Engine maintenance and repair. We have three awards. They are as follows. Chattanooga Tractor and Equipment. Sales Greek, excuse me, Sail Creek Outdoor Power Equipment and Service LLC. And Southern Pride Service and Repair LLC, each receiving an estimated annual cost of twenty thousand dollars each. Next, we have from the Fleet Management Division of Public Works, Vehicle Rental Services being awarded to Enterprise Holding, Incorporated. For an estimated annual cost of two hundred thousand dollars. And the last new purchase from Public Works Engineering Propane Service at, at the landfill. Being awarded to Suburban Propane for an estimated annual cost of thirty thousand dollars.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions regarding these items? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Auguste.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith. I didn't hear you.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I got muted, yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Must have been Lydia.
Motion's approved. All right, Mr. Salmons.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one emergency purchase from the Department of Public Works, and I think Mr. Holland is on with us as well.
Afternoon, Mr. Holland.
Good afternoon, counsel.
You have an emergency purchase for us?
Yes, sir. We have an emergency purchase for refuse and recycling services for thirty days with an existing contractor, Tennessee Waste Haulers. This fills a gap between the time that we will potentially install a new contract. And continue services that are refuse collection centers and recycle collection centers.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, typically they sign the papers in front of us. At this point, I don't guess that's possible.
It will have to be done electronically in accordance with the governor's order that is allowing signatures to be applied electronically. And they have to give you a report of the circumstances that's filed with the purchasing agent, and it's just going to be entered on the minutes of the council based upon this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lydia, just leave Mr. Holland on for the time being.
I will do that.
Mr. Salmons, you have a report on another emergency purchase?
The other emergency purchase is COVID-related. And from that, that emergency purchase. Is for emergency supplies, those supplies and materials for simple community services and community partners. For free COVID-19 community testing in an amount of six thousand dollars.
Okay.
There are a few other emergency purchases also that were under the mayor's emergency declaration for security services. Being awarded to SEI Incorporated Cleaning Services of Jam Pro of East Tennessee. The security services was in the amount of twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. The cleaning service in the amount of forty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Also, emergency disaster recovery management services awarded to Jacobs Engineering Group, Incorporated. In the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is for the gathering of data and capturing the costs accurately for the FEMA process. As it relates to the tornado damage, as well as emergency protective measures. Eligible for related costs as it relates to COVID emergencies. Also, protective. Personal protective equipment was purchased from DG S Retail. And that was in the amount of one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cent. And the last item also for protective, personal protective equipment from custom counter and display. And that was in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars, and that was for the city court clerk's office.
Any questions from the council over these purchases? I do have one, the security services. What was that item for, Mr. Salmons?
That, excuse me, the security was in, in need for standing up the location with the Salvation Army. Where they're setting up the posting for our citizens who have been tested positive for COVID-19 that are homeless.
Okay. Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for Phil, do I need to recuse myself from the Jam Pro purchasing? I'm a franchise owner.
Yes, ma'am, you should. If you have any personal interest in, in the contract being granted, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I think that does it for purchases, Mr. Salmons.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lydia, you can excuse Mr. Salmons. We move on, excuse me, to other business. Does council have any other business to bring to us? Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had moved to the table a purchasing item that we had some questions about. And I was able to do some research this week and dive in a little deeper. So if the council will entertain a motion, I would like to make a motion to take from the table purchasing item R one nine seven three zero four. And place it before the assembly.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will momentarily second that motion, but I'd like to. Remind everybody, Mr. Holland is available. And again, like I said earlier, I apologize for the way I handled this purchase last week. Without allowing proper time for further questioning before I made the motion. So with that, I will second Councilman Ledford's motion, and Mr. Holland is here. If there are any questions from any of the council members as it relates to this purchasing item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ledford, Councilman Ledford, I want to make sure I understand at this time, your motion is to take off the table this item, correct?
That is correct, sir, and place it before the assembly.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to publicly thank Chief Roddy for taking a public stance against the injustices that's happening across our world. Very appreciative of that. And also, I want to thank the police officers last night that took a knee last night with the protesters. Jared Sutton, Vaughn, and so many others. Thank you so much for being in solidarity. The look on their face, the tears in their eyes told me that they want to work with the community. To find some kind of solution and resolve to what's going on in our world today. And I got to agree, most definitely agree one hundred percent with Chief Roddy's statement that if any police officer or anybody, you know, didn't see an issue. With that video as they watched it, I don't know if you all watched the video or not, but I got to agree with his statement. Turn your badge in. Turn it in, because those behaviors are just not acceptable in 2020. We're supposed to be Nuga Strong. And meaning as in a verb, action. And we're supposed to be much better than what I'm seeing things are being displayed in our city over the past week with different protests and everything. And we're actually leaning towards more division, and, and we just can't, we can't take that right now. We don't need any more division. We need to be together and united. But I also got to say this, is that. We all, and I got a little pushback early on, once I got elected, and, and I'm cool with the pushback. But I got to be honest, is that we're losing too many black men and women due to violence from our own people, from black people. And just as like I go hard to make sure that accountability is held on our police department, I'm gonna do the exact same thing when it come to us displaying these same behaviors. Sometimes that's a harsh reality, and we don't want to talk about it in the black community, but we got to start talking about it because we got too many families hurting. We got too many people that's left without their dad, and it is, and specifically, I got a four-year-old that's left without her father. From a senseless act of violence. And not just because of Peyton, but it's so many other parents that's waiting on justice to be served. Because their child was gunned down by the hands of somebody that looked like us. It is just not acceptable. And we need more people speaking up about this. We need more people speaking up about it. We can no longer sweep it up under the rug, just like we can't continue to, you know, put the race racial systemic issues under the rug. We, we got to talk about it. Because we can't continue to lose people on our watch. The community is looking to us to lead, and that's what we need to do. So my call to action for everybody is that we need to hold every act of violence accountable. I don't care if you're black or white, every act, this is serious, people. It's not a game. We lose many, we, we losing too many of us. Now, I know I'm gonna get some backlash, but today, it, it, today ain't your day. It ain't about you. All that woo-ha room, I don't want to hear that. Because if you think that in 2020 that it's acceptable for black people to kill each other, I need you to pull up. I need you to pull up so we can have a conversation. I keep an open door policy. This behavior is getting out of hand. I'm tired of it. Every, every day we get an email from the police department where somebody black has shot somebody black or killed somebody black. It's not acceptable. Enough is enough. If I'm gonna stand up and protest against white police officers that are killing black people. Or doing this plan, any acts of police brutality. I'm gonna take that stance against black people killing black people the same. Now, for me personally. Whenever the person is brought to justice that killed my granddaughter's father. You can expect for me to be at every court hearing. You can expect for me to be at every parole board. Because she didn't, he didn't deserve it, and she does not deserve to be at four. Having to ask questions, having sleepless nights because she, she just don't know. And I shouldn't have to be thinking about how I'm going to communicate to a four-year-old. What happened to her dad? There's not enough ice cream in the world that can soothe this problem. We've got a problem within our own culture, and it needs to stop. I need men standing up, having that conversation with your young boys, your women, girls, all of that. We need to take a stance together. I need my white colleagues and friends. I need you to start speaking to the things that's going on in society right now today. When you see racist acts taking place, you need to call it. When you see racist acts taking place, you need to call it what it is right there. When you see injustices happening, you need to call it what it is right there because it's gonna take all of us, black people, white people, Hispanics to make a difference. All the people that's out here protesting, we need you voting. That's how you effectively make change. Not saying elf 12 because we need our police officers. We need them. They here to serve and protect us. There may be some bad apples that's along the way, but if you take a look at what's going on in our own communities, our own culture, we gotta, we gotta be honest with each other. And, you know, I just ask everybody, like I said, during this time, it's critical. It's urgent. Where people are protesting, it's babies out there that's protesting. They're going to jail. They're messing up their background because a lot of them are misinformed. We cannot continue to allow this to happen. We just, we just can't. We have to lead them in the right direction and show them how to effectively make change. And effectively making change means voting and creating legislation that's gonna change the laws and change the direction that our country is headed to. I never dreamed of a day that I would be living in these times that my grandmother spoke about, never. But if we don't unite on one thing, we need to unite on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I certainly support your views. Let me, let me get us back on task. We do have a motion on the floor to remove from the table this purchasing item. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Holland before we vote on the motion to remove from the table? If, if not, Madam.
I see no questions, but does Mr. Holland have anything he'd like to add?
Mr. Holland, anything to add before we take this?
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council, for considering this, this item again, as I spoke earlier about an emergency purchase, we did have to, this is part of that emergency purchase. We have had to extend our contract with our previous or existing contractor to fill the gap. It's an essential service to the citizens to dispose of refuse and recyclables at refuse collection centers and the recycle convenience centers that are throughout the city. But I'll take any questions from Mr. Chairman.
Well, I see no questions at this time. If we have no questions, no comments, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote on removing from the table, please?
Yes. Councilman Auguste?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Okay, nine yeses to remove from the floor. Okay, Councilman Ledford.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to move to approve the purchasing item R197304.
Councilman Byrd? See your hand up? Oh.
No. Second.
Second.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to approve this item with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments before we vote? Councilman Ledford, is that a new hand or an old hand? Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Yes.
Councilman Byrds?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
No.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Auguste?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries eight one. Okay, thank you, Council. Do we have any other business that needs to come before the council at this time now? Councilman Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. Moving into these protests and things that are going on to my African-American council members, before I became a council member, I, I never, 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 ever heard talk about, you know, how awful the council is or how terrible we are. But as I go through the city, I just see how we, we especially the African-American council that sit on this board are the most hated people when it comes to a lot of our own communities and people that look like us or that talk about us. And I've seen the hearts of all you guys and I know you, you are exceptionally smart and want the best for your communities. Councilwoman Coonrod talked about the violence that went on and for her to bring that up during these times, you know, she right, you're gonna hear the backlash that say you are sellout or you trying to deflect from the picture. We not talking about that right now. It's not about, oh, black on black crime, it's about these white folks killing black people. You're gonna hear that, man. And I, I just don't know where to go with that, you know, because the young man Khalil that got killed the other day in his father's home in his own bedroom by four people that he considered, four or five people who was in the room that he considered they're his friends. No one is saying anything. No one is saying Khalil's name. No one is protesting. Nobody's walking for Khalil. Khalil was a good guy. His father is a good guy. Nobody has said anything about Khalil. He left a four-year-old behind and that it's gonna wonder where my dad is. He's only gonna get to see pictures of her daddy and a memory that we tell them about her dad. And nobody's saying anything about that. But as the council, us African-American councils, if we say something about that situation, we're sellouts. We don't care. We're trying to deflect from it. We're, we're, we're not, we're not black enough. And it's very troubling to hear those things and to see my community attack me and talk about me for things that I had no, 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 no jurisdiction over sometimes, you know. But I get it, you have, you have to vent. I get the marching. I salute all the activists out there. I love you. Thank you. Because I can't get out there. I went to Coolidge Park the other day and sat with you for a little while, but I had to get back home to my family because I have a young daughter that has asthma and I gotta be truly careful about what I bring into my home. So, but I support you and I salute you, but I don't salute the violence. I don't salute the looting. I don't salute the issues that are going on in a lot of these cities. Chattanooga hasn't had those issues and I thank you for that. And I thank the activists for just standing up, being, being exceptional. You know, we don't need to go viral here in Chattanooga. We don't need to get likes. We don't need to do these things and tear our own city up because at the end of the day, we're gonna have to rebuild our city. We're gonna have to do the things to bring our city back up. And with this ordinance that's coming up about the Community Oversight Board, we need to put things in place to make sure that those things don't happen. I just put on Facebook, what does justice look like? What does it look like? No justice, no peace. Tell me what justice look like so that I could present to my brothers and sisters on council, so that I could present to the mayor, to Chief Roddy, to anybody in power, I want to present to them what justice looks like. I want to show them, this is what justice look like in Chattanooga and I want to push that forward. Why would I not want to do that? I have a son in here that's 15 years old that I'm raising. I want him to have justice. I want him to be able to walk the streets and not get pulled over. I got kicked out the mall for something ridiculous a long time ago. I have got harassed walking across the street myself just for being black and that, that is ridiculous. But all officers not bad. I, I have some good friends on the police force. I have people who love people on the police force. So I can't sit here and say all officers are bad just because they had a, a uniform on to protect you. And if we get rid of the police force, it's gonna be a purge on our entire city because the real criminals are gonna show up. The real people are gonna come knock at your door and it's gonna be an issue. So we need our police department, but we need balance. We need accountability. Hold me accountable. Hold every council person, our police department, our mayor, hold us accountable. But like Councilwoman Coonrod said, the black on black crime that we have in our community, we gotta hold you accountable too. We gotta make sure that you're being held accountable. So I want to see justice for Khalil. I want to see justice for all the young African-Americans, these cold cases that we have in our city. I want to see justice for these mothers and fathers whose children are dead. Alex Freeman, I want to see justice for him. We never found his killer. I want to see, so many people, the list goes, goes on and on. And I need to see what justice look like so I could do it because that's what I'm ready to think.
Mr. Nobles, I see your hand up, but let me go to Councilman Gilbert first.
Thank you, Chair. I agree 100% with my colleagues. It is too much killing of each other out there. I remember in the 60s and the 40s and the 30s where the KKK used to hang blacks, but they don't have to do it anymore because we killing ourselves. We need to stop. I agree 100% when it comes to, we have some bad apples in the police department. Every company has bad apples because who, what company it is. We either focus on the bad apples. We need to make policies that will get rid of the bad apples. Because the good people out there, the good policemen are trying to do their job, they got to answer to the bad apples because the bad apples get more publicity than what they get doing the right thing. So again, I agree 100% with my colleagues. You know, people want to criticize, that's what we there, when we, we got this job, we got thick skin, they can say whatever, but at the end of the day, they know it's true. We got to change that. I have grandkids and kids. I can relate to some of what Coonrod, Councilwoman Coonrod said. Few weeks ago, a young man, I've been knowing he was a kid, got killed. Don't know why, don't know who did it, but he was, he was killed. And these things, you know, you ask your parent that lost their kid, I haven't lost a kid, but it's painful. I know people that have lost kids. It is painful. So most parents feel like they gonna die before their kid. And when their kid died before them, it's something, it's terrible. So I hope that we could come together and agree that policies need to be changed, things need to be looked at more closer, not just to make a policy, but just to make a good change that people feel free, like Councilman Byrds said, they feel they can walk down the street without getting harassed or whatever in that nature. But again, I, I do, I, I thank my colleagues for saying what they said. Thank you.
Councilman Auguste?
Yeah, I want to share the same sentiments as my colleagues on the, on the council. You know, when I chose to endeavor this position on city council, I knew it would be days like this. But what keeps me going is the fact that I can't stop moving forward and believing in humanity within itself. I've had those same experiences growing up in the projects of St. Louis, the place where I grew up, it was public housing and it was built and destroyed in 20 years because of the social injustices that it exists. And when have you ever heard of them destroying public housing like that? What, what we are experiencing is African-American right now is a test of our humanity and what we need to do moving forward. And the murder of Mr. Floyd has brought out a lot of things that's systemic in, in our society, but it also has brought out that we have a common goal and a common effort to do things that better. You know, I sympathize when my councilwoman called me Sunday night and told me about the situation. And Councilman Byrd and I talk all the time and I get where Councilman Gilbert is going with grandchildren. I have, I have three grandsons and I have a son who's artistic that when he was a little younger, I struggled because I didn't, I didn't know that if he, because of his, the way he communicated, I didn't know if it had been mistaken for a, a lack of compliance. Those are the things that we have to deal with, you know, as, as adults, as parents, as grandparents. And I just ask all Chattanooga that you continue to express yourself, but express yourself in a nonviolent way that doesn't incite vandalism because you never, never want to lose sight of what this all about. And the violence that we have experienced, the vandalism that has happened has taken away from that. And I, I applaud you. This is almost as if to say, this is a prayer for us to come together and I believe with what everybody has been doing, all the different races, ethnic groups, civic groups, fraternity, sorority, churches, this is our time for greatness. And I believe if we put this in perspective and listen to what we on your city council has said, particularly us as African-American, don't ever believe that because we black, we supposed to be a certain way. And don't ever believe because we are doing what we doing, we don't care. I quiver it sometime when I get those emails from the police department about a shooting or a murder in, in our community because it leaves me powerless to try to figure out what I can do better. But Chattanooga, this is our time for greatness, to move forward, to continue to work together and work with us, not only the African-Americans on this city council, because our white colleagues on the city council cares a lot about what goes on. And it's with their support that we're able to do what we do, especially when we're challenged with the perception that we don't care about the black community. We're simply doing what we elected to do, to do the right thing for all of Chattanooga. So continue to look forward, continue to pray and know that we as a city council, all nine of us, is here for the betterment of all society and humanity. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, anyone else that would like to speak? Let, let me just, let me just echo the sentiment that's been shared here tonight. And I think we all have a heavy heart and, and if this doesn't burden you, there's something wrong with you. I would like to commend Chief Roddy for his tweet, for his stand. And I think it's that kind of leadership that sets the tone and it sets the culture for our police department. I have no doubt if we had a situation here that, that Chief Roddy would, would address it swiftly and I appreciate the, the concern and I appreciate the compassion that the, that our police department has shown through the, through the protests, through the demonstrations. I believe they've been a stand-up department and I appreciate that. I know that Mr. Turney has a, an item on our agenda under other business. Mr. Turney, I don't see any other hands. Would you like to address the item?
I will. I, I appreciate having all of you as my clients. This is an, an opportunity for y'all to be able to, to, to talk to each other, to share with each other the experiences that we have every Tuesday to deal with these issues that you have for your community. And I have no doubt that all of you will try to do the best that you can for the people that you represent. That's, that's what you're here for and that's what you try to do each week. My, my job as your attorney this week was to try to make sure I had something announced in a meeting that I have no authority to do. I wanted to make sure at least y'all, at least were aware that we had had two settlements of cases involving city employees here. And the settlements that were involved were recommended by the HR department and have been agreed to by the two employees that were involved by our insurance adjuster, Collins and Company. And there has been a on-the-job injury settlement that has been agreed to by our client on behalf of one city employee who was a building maintenance person for a permanent partial impairment rating of 17, of 13% for him here in the amount of $30,974.35. And there has also been a settlement involving a fire department employee who will no longer be able to work in the fire department for a 17% permanent impairment rating in the amount of $60,027.98. I need to have that at least recognized by the council in connection with this case. And that resolution, I, I do not have authority to be able to settle those cases because it's above my $25,000 authority under your ordinances. But I would like to present that to you at this point in time as other business this evening. This has been approved by both, both individuals here and one individual will be continuing to work. The fire department employee will not be continuing to work because her injury will no longer allow her to work as a firefighter.
Councilman Ledford, question?
Are you looking for a motion?
I, I do need to have a motion to approve that. Yes, please.
I move to approve.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve this settlement with a second. Any questions or concerns? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Auguste?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
You, you're muted, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burrs?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
There's nine yeses.
Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
I, I have one other settlement that was approved this week in mediation, but that is within our authority amount, uh, here for the city attorney's office. And, uh, that case involving, uh, a person by the name of Jane Doe has now been resolved by the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other business that needs to come before the council at this time? If not, we will move on to committee reports. I'll start with Councilwoman Burrs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, today at one o'clock, we had our second budget education session. We covered the capital budget and, uh, paving. Because the council had additional concerns, um, we will again next week be reviewing agency allocations and various items in the capital budget. The most important thing I want to say is that next week at six o'clock, we will be having a public hearing on the budget. We've made the budget available to everyone online. We have been discussing it for two weeks. And now we would very much welcome the input of the public as we continue on educating ourselves to deliberation. So please, six o'clock, if you will go to, uh, the city webpage, you will see how to sign up to be part of, uh, of giving us information that we so, so very much need from you. Uh, we'll need your name, your address, the district you live in. And as of today, no other identifying information. Uh, at no time was there any intent to invade privacy. And the IT department, um, has taken that back. And so just your name, your address, the district you live in. And please, we want to hear your concerns. That's next week, six o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Smith, you're muted.
Um, thank you, Ms. Chair. So next week, uh, we will be having a legislative committee meeting. Uh, as of right now, the only piece of legislation that we will be going over in that committee will be on essential cities. And it's, uh, federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild economy legislation. Uh, and that'll be presented next week, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Oglesby?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. On June the sixteenth, we will have a Economic and Community Development Committee meeting where we will get an update on Lincoln Park. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Burr?
Uh, thank you, Chair. On June the thirtieth, we will have a, a public safety meeting concerning the Community Oversight Board. And I just want to encourage everyone to, uh, reach out to your council members, uh, and, and talk to them about what you would like to see, uh, this community oversight board be able to do. Uh, be able to, uh, articulate that so that we can present it to our chief and to the other council members that are on this body. And if you look at, uh, some of the protesting things that are going on, Killer Mike, if you looked that up, Killer Mike said in one of the protests that has went viral that these communities need community oversight boards. And I just want to salute this council for putting this in place, in place long time ago. And I want to salute Councilwoman Coonrod, uh, and Councilman Gilbert for making sure also that this stays in our charter so that no matter what, it's not going to go away unless another council takes it away. So salute you guys for that. June the thirtieth, we will be discussing, uh, the, the language of the community oversight board for the police. And, uh, I look forward to hearing from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we did have a planning and zoning meeting today where we covered all items on our agenda. Want to remind everybody, we have a special meeting June twenty-third, which we will cover the vegetation component in relation to steep slope and floodplain discussion. Our next planning and zoning meeting will be on July seventh.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Next week, we'll have a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Gilbert?
On June the sixteenth, we're going to discuss the findings on the disparity study.
Very good. Councilwoman Coonrod?
No reports.
All right, thank you. Now we come to the time on our agenda where we recognize persons wishing to address the council on any item that they, uh, see fit. Counsel, I mean, uh, Ms. Lydia, do we have anybody that has registered to speak this afternoon?
There are a couple of people. I have searched for both and I'm just checking one more time. Neither of them seem to be in the list of attendees.
They're not in, we have one hand up, I see. Hold on just a minute. I'm not finding who it is though. Uh, uh, Ms. Pryor, do you have her?
She's on the list, sir.
She's on the list?
Yep.
Okay, would you bring her on, um, Ms. Lydia?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pryor? Can you unmute?
Okay, can you?
Yeah, yeah, hold on one second. Let me let the city attorney read, uh, our rules for speaking. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Um, ma'am, in this Zoom environment we're dealing with, we are electronically, uh, having to get, uh, to see you. We can't really see you today, but we're just trying to allow people to be able to speak. Each speaker at the end of the meeting is, uh, that is registered is allowed to talk to the council. And you can be recognized after you provide some identification, including your name, address, and council district. Uh, no person can have more than three minutes to speak and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and judicial authority. Uh, you can't address them on matters that are not under the authority of the council or not regulated by other governmental bodies. Uh, don't use any vulgar obscene language or use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others and only address the council as a whole. Don't make comments directed towards individual council members. But please go ahead, ma'am.
Would you give us your name and address, please, before you start?
Yes, it's Asia Pryor, fourteen oh-three Tunnel Boulevard, District Nine.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, and it's good to see you guys. Um, so. So I would first like to say that, you know, um, my heart goes out to the African American, uh, council members. Um, and, and the struggle that you guys must, uh, have to deal with of the, you know, all of the different perspectives and all of the different, um, issues that we are facing in our community. Um, but one thing that, um, I am very, very concerned about, um, is accountability. Um, and so for one, uh, I would like to address like why, I, I want to know why, um, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, um, has not responded or said anything about, um, this past Saturday when, um, we had peaceful protesters and I saw, um, officers with, um, what I thought were shotguns, but apparently they're beanbag guns, they're guns, period. And there is, you know, um, there's all kinds of, uh, examples of how we have not been, um, hearing people out, um, you know, properly, if you will. So I, I think, I think one thing that we've got to bring attention to is the chronic trauma that our people are going through. Chronic trauma from police brutality, which is the modern day lynching. Chronic trauma from violence against our own people. We've got to also address that not only does black on black crime exist, crime period exists, homicides period are existing. Violence period is unjust and it needs to be addressed. When we have police in our own city, like the six pigs that murdered Javario Eagle in cold blood in front of his five-year-old daughter, we cannot accept it. And we need to hold our officers, we need to hold our community accountable there. And, and as far as the quote unquote black on black crime that is very controversial, those are conversations that we're going to have. And I call and I call, we're talking about calls to action. I call different people that I wanted to organize protests. Let's also organize, um, black-only spaces where we can have these very, very sensitive conversations because it's very hard to have these conversations in front of people, uh, in front of a very public audience, um, that includes our oppressor. It, it gives us some sort of cognitive dissonance when we're trying to hear you out and also be angry about the injustices that we see. Um, and you won't hear me, um, being upset with anybody for, uh, rioting or anything like that just because it's chronic trauma. We are all suffering from chronic trauma. We're suffering from a time where violence is, is facing us left and right. We're, we're seeking, we're, we're seeing violence in our community, but then we're also seeing violence from the people that have sworn to protect and serve us. Who do you protect and who do you serve? There was a whole line of officers that were in front of protesters that were peacefully protesting, expressing their trauma, which I know is very hard to hear, but it's real. And we've got to hear it sometimes. And it's, it's horrible because what was done was horrible. And when people are, when people are sharing and a young man, seventeen years old, seventeen, eighteen years old, he said, why are you acting like this towards us? We're human. You know, if you, if you're in solidarity with us to protect and serve us the way that you say you are, get on one knee like, get on one knee like everybody behind me is. Once the people took a knee, there were only three out of several officers that took a knee. At what point are we going to come to middle ground? At what point are we going to find balance and all stop generalizing one another? But, uh, whether it be thugs or we all, they're, they're all pigs, right? That, that's just not true.
Ms. Pryor, will you hold on one second? Your, your three, three minutes is up unless, uh, council people are.
I think we've heard.
Yeah, okay. All right, Ms. Pryor, Ms. Pryor, thank you for coming and sharing your remarks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Vice Chair, I see Ms. Rankins has her hand up, I think. Is she registered or, or does she?
She had sent me a message, um, Mr. Chair, and asked if she could speak. She, uh, had a problem or was not able to register. So, uh, I would like to invite her to speak as she did reach out.
Let's, let's bring her on, please.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rankins?
Yes.
Uh, if you would, give us your name and address and you may begin.
My name is Tiffany Rankins. I live at forty-four Moll Street, uh, Chattanooga, Tennessee. I'm coming on to address as far as issues as far as Lincoln Park and also, um, as far as the killings or the protesting that has been going on. I've been hearing people speak about as far as the protesting, how sorry they are, how we are united together. You know, uh, when there was a single killing in the city of Chattanooga, we were never united. Let's not just be united because this is a worldwide issue now and it's coming to face. We have to continue to be united. Now, I also like to speak about the Lincoln Park issue. It was brought up two weeks, uh, uh, Councilman Burr, he did, uh, ask, uh, Councilman Oglesby as far as getting an update. I did hear Councilman Oglesby say it's going to be a meeting, uh, June the sixteenth on it. But it was publicly announced and then it just disappeared until today. Uh, it seems like, um, the, the leaders of, uh, the Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association should have been notified. Councilman Burr did reach out to me and he never did follow back up with me as far as getting together to meet. I'm kind of used to that, uh, treatment, so I don't worry about it too much. But, uh, as far as all the, uh, inequality, the injustice is all on different levels. This levels as far as not proper housing, people don't have anywhere to live, environmental injustice. We have so many different issues. It's almost like a powder keg. I'm hoping that you guys are just not set on caring, which it is a big issue as far as resolving the issue as far as police brutality. But you're interested as far as resolving the issue as far as historical preservation for African American communities that exist in the city of Chattanooga, the Native Americans that exist in the city of Chattanooga, being in compliance with certified local government, which you guys have not been in over thirty years. Um, so, you know, you guys need to be on the ball about a lot of things. I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rankin. Uh, Vice Chair, are you seeing anybody else that has registered that's on with us?
No, sir, I have not seen anybody else.
I'm not seeing any, any other hands. Uh, Ms. Lydia, would you bring on Chief Roddy, please?
Yes, sir.
Chief Roddy, good afternoon. Can, can you unmute your mic, sir? And there we go.
Can you hear me, sir?
We can. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good evening, council.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, make myself available to you all so you could ask me any questions about hopefully anything other than a tweet. Um, because, uh, that, that escalated quickly. Uh, but I wanted to make myself available to the council to answer any questions, give you any assurances that I could at this time, uh, um, for what your department and what our community is going through.
All right, does, uh, council have any questions for Chief Roddy at this time? I didn't know, Chief, if you wanted to address any of the comments that were made earlier or? Councilman Burr, I see your hand.
Yes, Chief Roddy?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much for, uh, being on here. I don't know, uh, if you can answer this question at, at this junction. Uh, I get this answer, I get this question a lot from constituents. Uh, they say, Councilman, if I assault somebody or kill someone on the street, uh, I go to jail and have to make bond and then be processed and go to court and see if I was guilty or not. They ask me, why when we blatantly see an officer do something, they are not immediately arrested or reprimanded? And I don't know how to answer that question. I know as a council, we can't fire any police officer. This council can't reprimand a police officer, even if we feel what we saw was wrong. Can you help me shed some light on that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Um, the, the one component that is almost always present when an officer has committed an act that could very well be investigated criminally is the agency that they work for is almost invariably not the agency that is going to do the investigation and ultimately the review to determine where the charges present. That is generally going to be depending upon the investigating agency, whether it is federal or state or another local jurisdiction, whether it's presented to a US attorney's office or your local district attorney's office. So there, there are multiple steps in that because we don't investigate our own typically. And the reason we don't is the automatic conflict of interest that presents itself. Um, in my twenty-five years as a Chattanooga police officer, I've probably worked with just about every officer that works here to some degree. And if I or they were responsible for investigating each other in some incident, there's an automatic conflict of interest that could be presented, truthful or not, that could undermine the ability to successfully prosecute that officer if the warrant, if the charges are warranted. Um, if the, if the charges aren't applied, then the conflict of interest resulted in a less due to full investigation. If the charges are applied, then myself, say, as the defending officer, could say that the end of it, that the reason that they charged me is that investigating sergeant didn't like me from when we used to work together. So there's an automatic conflict that exists. And that's why we, every single time, almost every single time, we ask for an outside agency to conduct that criminal investigation. Once that outside agency takes that role, speaking for me personally, I lose the ability, um, willfully to place the charges on that officer at that time. So there are more steps that get involved because you automatically have conflicts of interest present because you have officers doing a criminal investigation on officers, if that helps, um, understand a little bit better, Councilman.
It does, and I would like to further do, uh, maybe a sit down with you or a phone conversation because I would like to see how we can put things in place, uh, because also. Because also, when you have officers that have complaints, that we, we have no jurisdiction that can do nothing when it comes to the sheriff department, that's something that the sheriff department and that, that, that force has to deal with. I'm talking about Chattanooga, we can't do anything about Minnesota. But the officer in Minnesota had nineteen complaints against them, and I get that as well. Why would an officer have so many complaints against them and it doesn't trigger anything? And I think just that education session has to be hap, has to happen so that our constituents can see that this is the process. Maybe it need to be tweaked, maybe it need to be changed in some sort, but we can give them a, a answer and give them a solution to how we can strengthen that, that process so that they can see if an officer have nineteen complaints and then he killed someone, why did he not get reprimanded or why was nothing done further with the nineteen complaints, speaking of Minnesota? Or if it's in Chattanooga and something happens that something would trigger to where that officer would maybe have to sit in your office, and maybe that's already there.
And I, I would welcome that opportunity, Councilman. We do have a system in place that does produce what are called trigger alerts relative to the volume of certain, certain types of instances that could occur in an officer's path, whether those are car crashes, complaints, exceptional occurrence forms, injuries on duties, late calls, poor evaluations. All of these things compile a trigger system, which has a standardized policy required response by multiple levels within their chain of command. And then we also do annual studies of what that alert system is showing us as an agency, and there, and there are other mechanisms in place. So to, in brevity's sake, yes, sir, we have some things, but yes, sir, absolutely. I welcome the opportunity to discuss and get as much of that out and see if there are points of polish or, or replacement. I look forward to hearing some of that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair, Chief. We just had a constituent, the addressing concerns that was really geared towards the sheriff's department. Is there any way like we can identify the city police from the sheriff's department? Like, do your uniforms look different, is it a stripe on the side or?
Yes, ma'am. There, there are two distinct differences between our uniforms and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. City police officers wear a badge. Hamilton County Sheriff's Office wear a star. So when you see a shield similar to the one that I'm wearing here, that is a Chattanooga police officer. Also understand that a Chattanooga police officer's patch is round. So if you see another patch and it's not a round patch, it's not gonna be a Chattanooga police officer, chances are. So those are the two easiest ways that you can help identify between our two agencies. But ask. By our policy, if an individual encounters a Chattanooga police officer, and if the situation is not too volatile or dangerous, then our officer is supposed to give you their name and badge number, and you can confirm what agency they're with at that time. So if you have that question, ask.
Okay, thank you. And then my other concern is, I know we've, on our end, we've done a GARE study, I think that's what it was called, where we're taking a deeper dive into, I guess, racist, I don't know what we're calling it, I can't think straight, please forgive me right now. But just wanna know if the police department is a part of that work that the city is, is doing as far as having those conversations in-house and what we can do to, you know, how, you know, we're addressing these systemic issues that's, you know, really hard to talk about. Like, do we have anything in place or are we, just what are the police doing around, I guess, work around equity and everything?
I'm, I'm not sure which study that is, Councilwoman, but I would be, I'm confident in saying that I'm sure that we are a source of data. We are, we are oftentimes the face of Chattanooga city government. We are an engagement point for Chattanooga city government twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So I would go out on a limb and say that we are at least providing information relative to that. Other than that, I don't know that I could speak to what that study is. As far as what the police department is doing relative to equity, equality, representation, and hearing voices. Everything we can, which is not enough, is how I would phrase that up. So we are looking to find more. In the last few days, I have received countless emails, and I've responded to every single one of them, thanking for them reaching out to me and for local members that want to get into a room here in the near future to have the conversations similar to the ones that I'm having in the middle of Frazier Avenue currently at two-thirty in the morning. And I'll have some more of those tonight, and I'll have some more until they're no longer needed. But once we're able to, to get our time and our schedules realigned, I look forward to getting in the room and talking about it. And I could go on and explain, you know, what training we do in the academy, the community immersion training, poverty simulator, things that you are all are well aware of, what we do, the front porch lineups to get us out of our own building and into your homes and front porches, programs that you're, you're all very well aware of what your department does. But I think that, I think we're, we need to be a little more forward-looking right now on, not what we've done, but what's next. So if that answers the question, Councilwoman, I hope it does, but if it's not, I'll keep trying.
Oh, you told, you did a great job, Chief, I appreciate it. And just one last question, Chair, if I may. Chief, what, what do you have in place for you and our officers as, as far as wellness checks? Like, you guys are on the front line, you know, I can imagine folks, you know, you're dealing with a lot right now. And, and I appreciate you guys being on the front line and your willingness to be open to discussions. But you all have families just like we do. I most definitely want you guys to make it home safe, just like I wanna go home safe. But I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, the wellness of our police officers because at some point, you know, working those long hours, it can become exhausting. And I wouldn't want that, you know, any officer to make a, a quick decision because of exhaustion. So do we have anything in place that can, they can talk to somebody? Because I know y'all heart is heavy too, dealing with this.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate you recognizing that very much. Currently, your on-scene is, every briefing that we do, I, I remind the officers, last night your cup was definitely full. You need to have taken steps to get something out of it. And they didn't just talk through it with them. And also remind them, if, if their cup's still full when they come into work, tap out. Let us know, there is nothing wrong with pulling your sergeant to the side and saying, you look, you know what, tonight I just don't have it in me. And we'll work through that. Look out for one another. If you notice your teammate is just showing the signs of how hard it is to hear for five hours some of the things that are being said to our officers tonight. And I understand the expression, no pushback on that whatsoever, but it has an effect that we have to pay attention to. So look out, you are your brother's keeper. So we get those words out as well. We also implemented within the last year, a heavy push into our own peer support unit. And so there are well over twenty members of our police department that are actively reaching out or connecting with other officers to help them talk through anything that's going on. And we've also sent out reminders on our EAP program through the city. So as much of a multi-layered prep that we can for our officers, we're doing that right now. But we try to make sure that it's as constant as we can get. Now, and, and just to give another piece of information, we do have people that are out there every night that aren't saying those things to us. I have had some fantastic conversations every single night down there. Sitting around, talking, fist bumps, hugs, whatever, yes, I violated the COVID thing, couple of hugs, and sorry. But I'm gonna take them right now. But those are the things that take the things out of the cup as well. We're getting our officers and they're having those conversations. It's an interesting dynamic. Some folks that are attending the demonstrations thank us for being there as they walk in, express anger and fear towards police when they're in the demonstration, and then thank us again as they're leaving. And we try to make sure that we understand the purpose of peaceful demonstration is to do just that. So it's not every voice that's out there that stings right now, there are some that do, there are many that do. But it's not all of them, and we're paying, paying particular attention to those that don't, so it helps us get through the nights.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Chairman. Chief, thanks for coming on with us. I know you've gotta be out there again tonight, and I wanna thank you for, number one, being accessible with information to all of us. I know that we've reached out to you, we're burning up your phone, we're wanting to be kept in the loop on, on what's going on. I wanna commend your department for their response. I think that we are setting an example here in Chattanooga, I think you started that example. And I think that your department is following that lead, so I appreciate that very much. And you will be, always have our gratitude for that. So, you know, I believe that experiences shape our lives and our actions and our thought processes as we, as we go through life. This is obviously one that is extremely life-changing. I know it has been for me, you, and everybody else who's watching this. So in the end, what do you think we might have learned or what will change in our Chattanooga police department that will improve going forward to, so that we can take this pain and turn it into something positive?
I would say the biggest part is the conversations that I have mentioned within some of my last responses. But one of the, the comments that I got the other day, I was standing with a large group in the middle of Frazier Avenue, and a gentleman asked me, what are you doing? What have you done to bring about change? What, what have you done since it all started? And my response was, nothing. You don't want me to do that by myself. I can design all the solutions in the world, but if the people most affected aren't part of what that solution looks like, then I failed it. I won't hit what I need to. It's community policing one-on-one, that's why we call it problem-solving policing. I can, I can fix all the burnt-out street lights that I want to, but if I don't get the one that's over your house, you could care less about the other ten. So we, that's the conversations, that's the positive that comes from this, is it gets us into the conversations or if it's transparency, if it's a better understanding, if it's a different policy altogether, if it's bills and legislation, whatever form and hopefully forms that it takes, they're not generated by me. They're not, no offense, they're not generated by just this body. They're generated by the conversations that are gonna happen in the coming days and weeks and months. If we're, if we're gonna look for a light at the end of this, sir, that to me, that's it. It make, it's gonna be conversations that would never have occurred otherwise.
Right, thank you. Chattanooga's a great place to live, it's a different place, it's filled with so much diversity in, in this city, culturally and intellectually, technology. I, I just, I, I think that we will come through this together. I think that this council believes that one hundred percent, and I appreciate your leadership from the absolute second going forward. And, and I appreciate what my colleagues had to say tonight. It's an honor to be a, a part of this body, and it's an honor to live in this city, and I, I know we're gonna be better after this, thank you.
Okay, any, any other, Councilwoman Coonrod, is that a new hand or is that an old hand? Okay. Okay, I see no other hands for Chief Roddy. Chief, thanks so much for coming on with us this afternoon and, and speaking to us. I think you're exactly right. I think it's these situations that will cause us to work together and, and work together, we must, to come up with solutions for these problems.
I meant, sir.
All right. Council, is any other business needs to come before us at this time? Councilwoman Coonrod? Well, Councilwoman Coonrod has her hand up again.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to address, just basically make a comment about Lincoln Park and why I brought it up because I don't want constituents thinking that no one tried to include them on a discussion because there never was a discussion. Lincoln Park is the only historical black park that we have left. And over the, you know, decades, it's, you know, it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And I just don't wanna lose the opportunity to where we, we would lose something that's historical and important to black people because we're not passing on the right information or we're not making sure we're making the right decisions when it come to a park or a road. If we don't take the road, we lose, like, we gotta have those discussions and be honest with it because we need to know as a council, how do we need to move? It's very important that we, you know, are able to keep the park. It's a lot of history that goes along with that, right? Although, you know, I, I never had the opportunity to even play at Lincoln Park or any of those things. My generation, we were, we were told to go to one apart, Booker T. or Harrison Bay. But it is important, it's a significant piece of history, and I would love to make sure that we maintain that history because we don't have, we don't have any other historical spots in the city of Chattanooga. So I just want my constituents to know the place where I was coming from because, you know, I don't wanna lose it, the more we prolong it and, you know, drag things out, you know, it's, it's a chance that we could, and we need to be aware of that and know what, you know, what we need to do moving forward. And I do appreciate everything Tiffany Rankin and her mom that they're doing and making sure that they're preserving the park, it's, it's greatly appreciated. But my place was coming from the heart and making sure that we're doing all we can, advocate and making sure we're maintaining the park.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council, I see no other hands, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move, we're adjourned.